All righty, it's you. Go ahead and tell him to call this meeting.
I call this meeting the order.
All righty, this is Dean Cole. He's here for mayor for the day and called the meeting order. We call on Ms. Amy Craig for five to bring the notification.
Okay, please pray with me. Our heavenly father, we are truly grateful for this opportunity that we have to be gathered in these council chambers. We're thankful for our leadership and we're thankful for all the citizens that live here in this community. We're grateful for all the many blessings that we receive, our health, for our freedom, for our safety, and we ask you to continue to pour thy blessings upon us, especially watch over our first responders, watch over our public works, watch over each citizen, and bless us all that we might be filled with thy spirit. And we ask thee to please watch over these proceedings, that we will make wise decisions, and that we will keep the citizens in mind in all that we do. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
All right, get everyone to please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You see, all right. Our mayor today is Dean Cole. We've had a lot of fun with him today. He's been all over the city of Hopkinsville with all the department heads. Started out here today, municipal building. We went through the tax office. We was in CDS with Tom Britton for a short time, then back up, had lunch from Chick-fil-A. It was gracious enough from them, which you cannot complain. Then Chief Newby's gang took him and run around town with him. Todd Yorman, I'm sorry he had to go with Todd today. But, you know, we had a lot of fun with that. And then he went to the fire department over with Chief Futurman Bill and all them over there. They had a lot of fun with that. And then we ended up with Toby and then out to Sportsplex. We had a lot of fun. Which one was your best one today? Hard to choose. Okay, we'll take that. But we had a lot of fun. I hope he enjoys it. I hope he learned a lot from us today, and we appreciate you doing what you did. So if you'd like to go back and stay with your mom and dad, or you can stay here with me, it's however you want to do it. I'll let you run the meeting. You and Doug's got it. Let's head to go back and sit with the parents here in just a second. Thank you, sir. But we had a lot of fun with Mr. Cole today, and it was very fun to have young people in the office and seeing what we do and how we do things in city hall, in city government, and hopefully he had a good time. All righty, I ask for Ms. Brittany to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Francis.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Marsh.
Here.
Councilmember Crabtree.
Here.
Councilmember Craig.
Here.
Councilmember Martin.
Here.
Councilmember Wilcox. Councilmember Meek.
Here.
Councilmember Lamburger.
Here.
Councilmember Bill.
Here.
Sir Keel.
Keel. I can't hear half time anyway.
Councilmember Bell. Councilmember Handy.
President.
And we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Thank you very much. He'll answer just about anything. Come on. All righty. Awards and recognitions. We have no awards and recognitions this evening, so we'll move on to item six, public comments. If anyone would like to come to the forum, the forum air and speak, you have three minutes to please state your name and address for us, so we can put that in the record.
Hello, everyone. My name is Terry Redwine. I reside at 195 Farm Hill Drive. I am here as the president of the Hopkinsville branch of the NAACP and its constituents. On August the 2nd, 2023, I received a copy of a controversial video from a concerned citizen. My course of action was to immediately contact Chief Newby of the Hopkinsville Police Department about the video, and later with Mayor Knight concerning the 8th of August weekend. I spoke with the chief and the mayor about an expeditious resolution to our community's concern. As you can see by this evening, the attendance, the majority is not satisfied with the results. The NAACP and the community will like for you to be transparent about Officer Klein's consequences for his actions. Please note, I am here only to speak on the behalf of the NAACP Hopkinsville branch. Anyone speaking after me does not represent the NAACP. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you, ma'am. All righty, anyone else like to stand and speak?
My name is Dewayne Morgan. I actually don't even live in Hopkinsville. I just had some issues with the cops here, specifically Mr. Klein. He took part in illegal arrest of me February 14th of last year, and you'll know about that soon. But when I saw that with Officer Klein, I figured I would have to come over here and say something about him. So apparently, he doesn't know what the actual law is, so I'm not sure what he's enforcing. And for some of the other stories I've heard about the officers, well, cops, these are not officers, these are cops. Officers are good people. So there might be a few here, but there's a lot of bad ones here, and y'all know it. Everybody knows, and it's probably being covered up, just like with, I've had two investigations done for trespass from a hospital, or the person that did the investigation. Of course, they investigated themselves and found they did nothing wrong, which was a lie. He lied in that as well. And for this one here, they also did an investigation, found out they did nothing wrong. Well, I'm trying to figure out how they did nothing wrong when they had no jurisdiction in the federal post office. And the very next day, after I already spent about 10 hours in jail for a non-crime, which means they violated my First Amendment right, my Fourth Amendment right, and probably a few more of them. So it's, I didn't realize it was this bad here, but apparently it is, and it's just being covered up. But he said Newby or something said, oh, it was taken care of. Well, apparently it's not. And, you know, he has no integrity. I found out that when that illegal arrest happened, because I was talking to him before the arrest, showed him the law right there. But of course, someone comes in and outranks him. What does he do? Okay, yeah, so he illegally detained me, illegally arrested me. But the very next day, I got a letter from the post office saying, hey, we apologize for you getting arrested. You did nothing wrong. You broke no laws. And I even called the department and asked them if they had what's called a memorandum of understanding with the post office. The PIO or PIA, whatever it's called, had no clue what that was and didn't have one, which meant they were very, it was very illegal for them to do anything they did that day. But, you know, the two, Klein, I can't remember the other one, but Sierra is the main one. So he's probably part of this as well. So Sierra was the main one that did that, and I'm taking legal action against them. I'm not going to do it against the town, because the town are good people. It's the cops. So I'm going to do what's called a 1983, and make all three of these officers lose their qualified immunity, and make them pay money out of their own pocket. Then we'll see what's going to be done. So hopefully, this meeting sheds even a little more light on it. And there's probably a few more stories about some of the cops here that I probably can't even remember to have acted to my wife. I'll tell you that as well, and that's Hopkinsville cops. She was parked over in my big lot, had a handicap placard. It fell on the floor. Some little, we're going to call him a little punk cop, comes up, he calls, I don't know, five, six other officers. They blocked my wife in like she's America's Most Wanted. Wouldn't let her get in the car because of a placard that fell on the ground.
Sir, your time is up, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to come speak at the podium? Thank you for coming up, sir.
My name's Jeff Springer. I live in Hopkinsville, and I'm actually up here to support Officer Klein. I saw the article that came out by WKDZ, and it was nothing but a finger circle game. I played that game in the army. It's nothing but trying to say, I got you, literally what the article says. And you try and find different and creative ways to do it, so nobody expects it. You can even break the finger circle and, you know, whatever else happens, depending on your organization's rules or whatever. And I don't understand how it can be misconstrued as offensive when it's literally just a game. And you can tell based on the picture's actions that he has no ill will, ill intent. There's nothing going on there other than a lovely game. I've had the pleasure in personal circumstances in an off-duty, in an off-duty situation, and I've met groups of officers, and they're all different, races, creeds, sexes, orientations, it didn't matter. But what I saw there was the fact that they were all one team. They were all having a great time. They were a family. And coming from the army, I know what that looks like, especially being in a unit when you get deployed to combat. You need that family. And unfortunately, because of a little game, it's getting blown up. And even in that article, it states that it was based on misinformation on a 4chan, on a 4chan web thread. So I would caution doing anything negative based on, based on that article. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else like to speak? State your name and address, please.
Of course. Robert Bussel. I address 110 Bellocourt. First off, I would say thank you for allowing me to be here. I apologize if I do speak quickly. So the whole process with Jeremiah Klein, I've known Officer Klein. I've known him for 14 years, as in I've wrestled together with him. I've been with his family. He's been the cookouts of my family. He's taken me in. His family has taken me in. A lot of people are blowing it out of proportion, as in this game right here. We've done it as kids. And what I mean when we've done it as kids, it's as simple as, I got you or made you look. And there is a lot of people trying to make it about race. It's not about race. Someone who does not like someone of a certain color, they would not allow you in their home. They would not allow you to live with them. They would not allow you to bring your kids over with them. My daughter, his son, best of friends. And a lot of people don't see that. A lot of people don't see what Officer Klein has done for a community. I worked at the hospital for five and a half years. I've seen him come in there with the worst of the worst patients, still doing CPR, when there was no other thing to do. But he still tried, and most of them were people who looked like me. When we had shootings a few years ago, and it was people that looked like me, Officer Klein was first on scene multiple times. A lot of people won't realize that because they don't care. Everyone has an agenda, and that's what they're trying to do now, is an agenda. I'm pretty sure that everyone by now has seen the video on TikTok that was made by a controversial creator. If you look at his post, that's all he does all day. He makes controversial things. It gets him likes. It gets him paid. I thank you all for allowing me to speak, and I hope you make a good decision.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Martin Barnes. Reside at 1603 Marine Court. Just got through reading the book of allegiance. Look it up. It says, "The Pledge of Allegiance was written August of 1892. This was written by a socialist minister, Francis Bellamy, 1855 to 1931."
Originally published in the Youth Companion on September 8th of 1892, Bellamy had hoped that the pledge would be used by citizens in any country. And when we read that, it says, "I pledge allegiance to my flag," or "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." I too am a veteran, fought over in the Iraqi war. My reward for fighting over in the Iraqi war, the day I got back in my DCUs in Virginia, was pulled over by five police officers. Then they asked me, well, what they asked me is where I was coming from. I told them I was coming from Iraq. They said, well, where are you going? I said, I'm going home. Asked for my license, my registration, I gave it to them. Went back to the car, stayed there for a little bit, came back, dropped my license and my registration in my lap, and said, have a good day. I cannot begin to tell you how that made me feel, to know that I'd gone across the world to fight for rights that don't even apply for me when I get back home. Now, I don't know Officer Klein personally. I do know this, though. I'm wearing a black shirt, but anybody in this room could say that this is a purple shirt. And I said, no, it's a black shirt. Said, no, it's a purple shirt. And that's their perception. And to the one who perceives it, it's truth. Now, here are people saying that it's a game, but one person's game is another person's offense. And we need to be mindful of that as citizens in this great country of ours. We all have the right to speak. We have the right to give our opinions. But we should have something on the inside of us letting us know that we never have the right to offend somebody else. You got some God-given rights, too, like love and care and looking after one another. My brother said it right when he said in the military, that's what we do, we have to be a family. But I watched some of my same brothers that I was over there serving with in Iraq, that we said that we would never, ever lose contact with each other. We kissed the ground when we got back. We all kissed the ground. But as soon as some of us got back, we had like we didn't know the others.
Sir, your time's up.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak this evening?
Is it okay if I pass this out?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
We can share. I promise. We're good. We can share, yeah.
Joe, come here. We can share. We can share.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Cherry West. I first came here in the 70s. The sign out on 91 said, Hopkinsville, Kentucky, 29,000. The sign on 41, where you go into Clarksville, said, Clarksville, Tennessee, 29,000. Today, when you stop on 91, that sign still hasn't reached 40,000. The sign on 41 going to Clarksville says, Clarksville, Tennessee, 175,000. You would like to believe that the reason why that happened is because they was good at publicity and marketing. No, my friends. I passed this letter out to you that I wrote to the voice of the people in the 90s. I was always coming down here to the same venue saying, please, I just saw the police tear up a soldier's car. You're going to run them off. Please, I just saw a police body slam somebody. You go run everybody off. So every time, they would say, well, if they don't want to live here, they can go somewhere else. Well, look at us. They are with somewhere else. You don't have anybody left in Hopkinsville, Kentucky, except for me and the old folks. As soon as these kids get grounded, they gone. Now, you sitting here allowing these police officers to continue, run rampant, and be worse than the criminals. And all that's happening is they're going to draw retirement. And pretty soon, you already working at trying to shove up the retirement. We can't even down fixed streets, because we fighting to keep this retirement going. And pretty soon, we won't even be able to keep the retirement going, because we're going to have nothing but retirees that have exemptions from taxes. We got to take a different look. Einstein said, keep doing the same thing expecting a different result is insanity. And we've been here doing this insane thing ever since I came. So my thing is, my phone beep, I think about three is up.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up, please.
Mayor Knight, council members, Chief Newby, friends and attendees. My name's Jeff Taylor. Before I get started, I want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to address you. And I also want to acknowledge my council member, Mr. Hamby. He's been very responsive to my calls. Unfortunately, he couldn't answer any of my questions, which is what brings me here tonight. I want to start a little bit just about talking about initiative. We've heard that term all our life, take initiative. You want to be successful, take initiative. You got a problem, take initiative. We've always been told that. With my initiative tonight, it's one thing. It's one thing simple. Ask for the immediate dismissal, Officer Klein. This right here. For years, I use this. This is my fraternity symbol. But we all know what's happened in recent years. This stands for white, and that stands for power. Unfortunately, Mr. Klein did this, and he also made a video, which I don't really have a problem with, but it's quite insensitive. But I'll ask you this. I'll pose this to everybody in the audience. Go to a hardware store, go to Lowe's, hardware's an employee, and flash that sign. Go to a factory and on the floor, flash that sign, see how long you last. Go to a bank, as a bank teller, flash that sign, see how long you last. A hospital, a school, any of these places, any of you that got a job, try it. Any of you council people that have a job, try it. You will not make it to the end of the day. So we, as fiduciaries and stewards of the public trust that are held at a higher standard, take no action. Now, why would these entities, the banks, and the schools, and the hardware stores, and the factories, why would they terminate a person so quickly? Hurts morale, destroys their image, runs off customer base, and it destroys public trust. Regardless of his intents, he's lost public trust. It's a disaster. He's an accident waiting to happen. When a police officer pulls us over, all that we see is their sex, their race, the color of their hair. We don't know if they're a white nationalist or a white supremacist, but we've got one that advertised that he very probably is. He's advertised it. I'm going to be very, very uncomfortable, and so are a lot of other people in this crowd, if that officer pulls us over. And even more tragically, he's running it for a lot of good officers. And there are good officers here. There are officers here that have helped me, and he's tainted it. Take initiative, folks. I have some things that I want to share with you. This is from the International Chiefs Association, international. I'm going to share some things with you.
Would you round it up, please?
Regarding their code of conduct. I will make it very quick. I'm sorry. Okay, number four, conduct unbecoming, either on duty or off duty, cast doubt about their integrity, honesty, moral judgment, or character, brings discredit to the agency, or impairs the agency efficient and effective operation. Public statements, appearances, endorsements, social media, officers should follow this agency's policy on social media. I can go on and on. He has hit at least two-thirds of the items on misconduct according to the International Police Association. And whether we have it written in policy or not, that sets a standard. Going back to initiative.
We need to round this up.
What is the definition? The definition simply of initiative is doing the right thing without being asked. Please don't make us ask you again.
Nope, no questions right yet. Anyone else like to come and speak? Anyone else like to come and speak?
Hello, my name is Caleb Ballard, I live in Oak Grove. And as some of you may know, know me as the Crime is Down guy. That being said, I've been a critic of the local government here and the police department in the past. I can't take credit for the Crime is Down slogan as that come from our former mayor, Carter Hendricks. And the reason it was so popular is because everyone knew it was a joke. Everyone knew that crime wasn't down, but our police chief and administration continued to use the phrase. Today, we have a new council, new police chief, and new mayor. A lot has changed since they took office. Positive changes, we have a fully staffed police department now for the first time in ten years. Codes are being enforced that haven't been enforced in ten to twenty years. Every change in leadership should bring forth positive change. That's how the system should work. I'm an advocate for free speech, and I speak out on issues all the time. But I think it's important that when I speak out, I have the facts to back my claims. It's also important to make sure that I'm not in a photo engaging in the same behavior that I'm speaking out against. Our local media has fallen apart. They refuse to report what's going on in the town. Social media is a good tool for citizens to use and report the news that the local media ignores. Social media can also be one of the worst places on planet Earth. Everyone sees everything differently. Even members of this council know it's hard to get ten people to agree on any subject. So as a former critic of this council, well, I mean, I guess I could be still a current critic too, and this police department, I would like to thank you for doing a good job trying to bring transparency to the department, the council, and the mayor's office. And I would like to see positive changes continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak at the forum?
My name is Becky Dearman, I live at twenty-six fifteen Cox Mill. Thank you for allowing this time. I want to start by disagreeing slightly with Ms. West when she said that nobody is left in Hopkinsville but the old people. My fiance and I believe in Hopkinsville. We actively work to better it in any way we can. I've had multiple conversations with the mayor, whenever you need me, you call me. And he has, and I've shown up. And we will continue to show up. The day the news broke about the TikTok video, I messaged him and under five minutes, he called me back. That says a lot. It does. There's only so much willful ignorance I can claim at my job, though. I work in IT. I can't forget to put antivirus on everything and be like, oh, I didn't know. I have to do my job to the best of my abilities. I've never had an employer that would allow me to use social media on the clock, in uniform, blatantly, and keep my job. That's a bad idea. One of the issues was the picture with the hands, hands on. I don't actually care what he thought it meant. It doesn't matter. He is supposed to protect and serve all of us. And I feel not that protected. The contents of his TikTok were not just racist, they were homophobic. One of the things that I told Mayor Knight was, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be honest. I wouldn't feel super secure if I had a call to the police in the middle of the night and a cop that had put blatantly homophobic material up showed up to my house. That's a little nervous making. I will agree with Caleb Ballard in that I think we've seen some really positive changes. I don't agree with all of them, but I think we've seen some. But you have citizens who do not feel safe. I don't know what the answer is. But we deserve to feel safe by the people who take the job to make us feel safe. We deserve to feel protected by the people who swore an oath to protect us. I don't actually care what you think about me. But when you put it blatantly up in public for us to see, that's not my fault. There are things that I do in my job that if I, if I did them, I would not get to keep my job. That's common sense. As an active member of this community, I am asking to be held, our, our, our law enforcers, and listen, I do believe we have a lot of good cops. I, I absolutely do. I think we've got a lot of really good ones. But I think there is a standard to be held to. That's all I'm saying. I should, I should not feel threatened if I have to make a call in the middle of the night. I should not be as worried about the cop that's going to show up as the crime that's actively being committed at my house. So, thank you for your time, thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else like to speak at the forum?
My name is Jamie Gap. I'm a retired city employee. I don't live in Hopkins anymore, but Hopkins feels still very dear to me. And I wasn't gonna speak, I really just was here for solidarity, but I just wanted to, Mr. Taylor, I want to make an example, a point. Correct me if I'm wrong, but you had said your fraternity symbol was a W to hand up like this, correct? And the W was for what? I just want to make an example, real quick. This was not the symbol, this was not the symbol he put up. Okay? I don't even play that game, but I'm showing you example of how misinformation can cause a lot of trouble. It was like this, sir. It was not a W and a P.
Sir, Mr. Gap, would you please disprove?
I need you to speak to council.
Thank you, Mr. Gap. Anyone else would like to speak at the podium? Speak to council.
Nancy Askew, twenty-six fifteen Cox Mill. I just want to make another point. I, I grew up with Mr. Gap, love him, love his sister. There wasn't just a symbol on a photo. There was a long history of videos that came out where he joked about giving diabetics Narcan, where he talked about homophobic things. He called a fire department homophobic names. There are things that are in that history. It's not just one video or one photo. I think we're losing that because we keep talking about the symbol, which is in itself offensive because of where we are today. But there's a clear pattern of behavior and a disregard for his public image and the image that he portrays with his badge on. And I think that's a really big disrespect, not only to our city, but to our police force as well. Because I've never had a problem calling the police or had a problem with our police force. Everybody's been really great. When I did leadership Hopkinsville last year, doing that tour was fantastic. And learning a little bit about what these guys go through is important. But there's also a personal responsibility to make yourself a professional in a field. And I just don't know if right now is the time for him to be in that. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak at the podium?
Good evening. My name is Gwen Parker, and I live at four-six Kawai King Drive. How many of you all have your own personal business? Hold your hands up. Now, when we sent, when you all send out your workers, or you do the work, you send your best. Because you know there's going to be a survey or review done. And I'm talking to you too, Mayor, because I've used your business.
Yes, ma'am, you have.
And your business depends on what the survey says so that you can get more business through companies of those appliances.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have a business here. It's our home, it's our livelihood. This is our place of safety. If we're not given the best service as we would want our employees to give, I'm talking to you business people, then your business suffers. And sometimes it goes away. Okay, that's one of our employees. We want the best. I don't know if he was joking or if he was serious, but he misrepresented. Now, somewhere along the line, maybe he wasn't taught. So now we gotta go back and teach all of them. You don't joke like this. This job is a job that we are held accountable for from the top to the last person that's employed through taxes. So we gotta do better teaching. But right now, we're gonna lose some service and some help because of what has gone down. So we need to think about it. Are we, can we afford this? Because see, a little leaven messes up the whole load. And if it happens and we let it slide now, somebody else is gonna say, well, they let him slide, so I'm gonna do something too. Then the next thing you know, you gonna have one group against the other, regardless if it's race, rich, poor, whatever it is, we can't afford it. We've already lost a lot in Hopkinsville. When I was in Fort Campbell, they thought, Hopkinsville thought the soldiers were coming here. When I got ready to retire and we met, the very thing they said, we're not sending our soldiers to Hopkinsville. We're encouraging them to go to Clarksville. Now, look at us. We used to be bigger than Clarksville. Now, if we're gonna keep on and let it, let us suffer because of fun and games, then hey, we will be what we are. And it's not much. Think about it. And your business, your personal businesses will suffer also. Be careful what you're doing and do the right thing. Because see, God is gonna hold all of us accountable. I'm telling you.
Thank you. Any else, anyone else like to come to the podium and speak?
Hello, my name is Tashana Douglas. I live at one zero one nine East Fourth Street. I just want to come up here, for those of you who don't know me, I am a boy mama. I'm a boy mama to three grown men, twenty-seven, twenty-four, and twenty-one. They're gone. But I'm also a boy mama to a lot of the kids that's still in this community, that are around this city. I'm still Mama Tang, as they call me. We confused about the symbol, the W and the P that he held up. I run into a lot of confusion about my sons and their friends being called thugs because they wear hoodies, they wear dreads, or they wear their pants with the tore up and the, you know, different things that kids do, but they're labeled as thugs. And after they're labeled as thugs, they end up in the back of a patrol car. They end up down at the station, all off of perception. So I perceive that W and P as what it was presented as. And it's very scary. When my kids are in town, if I hear police car right now, I'm calling them like, hey, where you at? Where you, what, what street you on? Because I'm that scared as a boy mama. Social media world, my kids, the oldest twenty-seven, they grew up in a social media world. I didn't have social media, we didn't have dial-up Wi-Fi, none of that when I was younger. But the social media world kids think that social media is it. They think that's the life. But me, as their caretaker, their supervisor, I have talked to them about, this is not what you do on social media, don't put this on your Facebook, don't put this on Twitter, because once you hit that submit button, it's gone. And the way I perceive it, what they say perception is nine-tenths of the world, that's the way it's perceived. And as someone already mentioned, we don't want our city looking like somebody who just lets stuff go, get swept up under the rug, because that's the stage they get set. Do we want that stage? I don't want to enter that stage, I might exit stage left, but we need to think about that.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to come to the podium and speak?
Good evening. Clayton Sumner, citizen for as long as I can remember, still am. Things have changed, obviously I'm retired now. Some of that includes I don't have a filter anymore. I don't have anything to do with the police department anymore. I haven't talked to the chief since he took over. Very few of the officers. The one thing I hated when I was the chief is how police officers have to constantly get bashed and no one can really say anything. See, some of y'all may not realize the council can't say anything because they're directed not to by the attorney. That's the safest thing to do, that's risk management. So they're not gonna respond, they're not gonna say anything. I saw the TikTok, and you know what? That's been a game since I was a kid. And about two thousand and ten, someone did a thing on social media and thought it'd be a funny prank and started talking about that being a white symbolismist, white supremacist, whatever group. Two thousand and seventeen, the Klan came out, a terrorist group came out and said, yeah, that's something we are adopting, that's it. That doesn't change that it's a game. That's just someone else redefining things. Mr. Taylor, I know loves antique Mercedes-Benz. If someone tomorrow decides to come along and say the Mercedes-Benz symbol is gonna be the next prank, and in five years from now, a white supremacist group or some other terrorist group says, hey, that's our symbol, and now we start bashing anybody for having that symbol, that's just ignorance. I know Officer Klein, I have not spoke to Officer Klein since this. I know what Officer Klein intention was when he become an officer and started social media, and that was try to get people to see police officers as people and not just a symbol of government. Watch all of his TikToks. Watch all of his social media, the jokes and fun they're having. They're doing that to try to be lighthearted, to try to bridge gaps. Now, I will tell you, when I left there, there was a policy about doing stuff in your uniform and everything. So you know what? If you asked me then, I'd be like, yep, me and that officer would have had a talk, and I'm sure that's happened because I know Jason, or Chief Newby. Discipline is meant to be corrective in nature, so people learn from it. But to say that something, a symbol that we've done since we're kids, or people have done since they're kids, or in two years, Mercedes-Benz symbol, if that's the next fad on TikTok, is racism, that's ignorance. That's, that's just complete ignorance. That is people trying to cause controversy, hate, and divide in our community instead of actually trying to fix things and make them better. And that's ignorance, and that's a problem. And until we can all realize that that is part of the problem, we can't move forward. I have no, I heard that comment on the way here, the homophobic thing. I have no clue what that's about. No clue. So if that happened, I can't answer that, I don't, I didn't see that.
Mr. Sumner, you're out of time, sir.
Thank you all, do the right thing.
Anyone else like to come to the podium and speak?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Sheila Barnes. I reside at sixteen oh-three Green Leaf Court. I just have one thing I'd like to say because I was asking my husband. They say this is a game they played since they was children. I'd just like to ask, everybody raised their hand that played this game. We don't know what this game is. I don't know what this game is. They're saying it was just a game and they played it. I was born here. And I lived here all my life until nineteen eighty-four, and I moved to Chicago. And I worked for the Chicago Public School Systems up there. And I know moving back here that there wasn't much growth. I brought three young girls back here. And we moved from a part of suburb of Chicago that had schools, that had all kind of activities. They did drama, they put on plays, they did everything. I brought them back here to a high school that I went to that didn't have hardly anything, don't have things for young people to do. And to bounce off Ms. West, I was gone for almost eighteen years and come back. No growth, no change. I don't see a whole lot of change. But I do see Clarksville growing. And I understand why Clarksville grow, because my parents talked about it. We didn't want the soldiers here. They didn't want them here, that's why they're not here. And Fort Campbell put it in play that they don't come here. But all I'm gonna say is, we're not familiar with this game. We are familiar with what is being put out there as being a part of different type of clubs. That is not something that we recognize as being positive. So for you to say it's a game, it's not to us. Because we never played this game. Thank you.
Anyone else like to come to the podium and speak tonight?
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Kristi Madgeon.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Kristi Madjan. I live at 1262 Second Street. I am here not to deter from the seriousness that has presented itself here with the people in my community. And I don't want to deflect from that, yet I do have questions in reference to my neighborhood association scenario. So I have a few questions I'd like to ask directly. And I'd start with, uh, neighborhoods, we have been told that the legacy program will only have $350,000 to work with going forward. The neighbors haven't been told how it would be used. So we don't understand that. We're looking for some transparency there. Will neighborhoods have meetings and executive boards? That's a question that I continue to have. Uh, will there be elections? Will neighbors be able to bring empowerment plans and housing empowerment plans to the neighborhood to be approved? And will it go through the LDC? Uh, empowerment plans have saved at least 350 homes over the years. That might not seem a lot to some people, but for those who could not afford to have their homes repaired, it is quite tremendous. Um, I live in a neighborhood, and the inner-city neighborhoods are, large amount of them are landlords and slum lords as well. In addition to that, we do have homeowners. And we have homeowners in this historically African-American community that are being destroyed for various reasons on many different levels. Um, I also would like to know, um, well, I think it's only fair actually that, um, after 15 years of working with people in their homes and try to get them established, that we understand the plan and that it's transparent and it's something we work on as a unit. And, um, it goes forward for our community. We do have a lot of people who are homeowners, and we want to protect that and ensure that goes forward. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak at the podium? Anyone else like to speak with public comments? Alrighty. Seeing none, we'll move forward. Item seven, mayor's comments. The cleanup, the tree cleanup. We are finally back on a regular schedule. Thanks to Richard Hopper, Mike Perry, and all these fine folks with Public Works and Solid Waste. We are finally back where we deserve to be. So we will be back on, if your Herbie Kirby's run on Monday, your garden, your tree pickup and debris pickup will be on Monday. Tomorrow, on Wednesday, will be Wednesday's route. We'll be back on schedule. Thank you so much. Got Relay for Life, uh, on the 18th at the Sportsplex. I hope everyone comes out and shows support for that. We have, um, Believe Again movie premiere at the Alhammer on the 18th, too. I hope you'll be able to come and see that. And Summer Salute is coming up on eight, on the 25th and 26th there, and I hope everyone comes out for that. And now we'll move into item eight, reports from officers and committees and guest speakers. And first would be Ms. Melissa Clayton.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to bring you guys the July financial report. So for the month of July, we had three interfund transfers. Um, we gave $7,500 to the Southwestern Kentucky Economic Development. I, I don't control that. That's, that's not in my control. Did y'all get it?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, we gave $665 to the Challenge House Movement sponsorship, and then we gave $3,159 to the Challenge House Back to School Bash. Total interfund transfers for July is $11,324, leaving a remaining balance and interfund of $88,676. Payroll tax for the month of July, budgeted, we budgeted $1,782,000, and we collected $1,918,000. So we had an increase in equivalent payroll for the month of July of 11.98%. Insurance premium tax for the month of July, last year we collected $1,240,000. This year we collected $1,024,000. So we had a decrease in our insurance premium tax for the month of July. We don't worry a whole lot about that. It's more on a quarter basis. So if July was low, it usually means August will catch everything up. And then business license for the month of July, we collected, um, $256,528,000. Last year we collected $103,512. So our business license for July is over what we collected last July. We don't report on property tax until property tax season gets here in October, so I have, we have no property tax yet. So for the general fund, we had prior year encumbrances of $256,251. We totally collected revenue in the month of July of $4,385,170. We had actual expenses of $4,376,762, which gave us revenue over expenses of $264,659. And then we ended encumbrances in July of $225,652, giving us a positive revenue over expenses of $39,700. And that is a rarity, I will tell you guys, July. Normally, we have a lot of yearly payments that come out in July, or insurance and things like that. Normally, we, we have a deficit in July, and we did not this year. So I think that's a really good sign. Municipal Road Aid Fund, uh, we started the year with the encumbrances of $353,000. We collected in the month of July $65,572. We had actual expenses of $315,710. So we had revenue over expenses of $103,153. We had encumbrances of $59,000, giving us a positive revenue over expenses in the MRA fund of $43,481. Our capital fund, we had prior year encumbrances of $409,976. We paid actual expenses of $246,000, giving us revenue over expenses of $163,000 in the capital fund. We do still have a large balance of encumbrances. We ordered a lot of vehicles during the month of July, um, so that they'll come in in the next few months. If we paid for all those vehicles, we would have negative $310,638, but we obviously won't pay for them for a few months until they come in. So, um, as far as department expenses go, everybody, um, we should have 8.33 for one month, and we had a lot of retirements. We also have a lot of payments that come out in July. I said that already. So we do have some departments that are over budget for one month. So admin has 10.4%, tax department's at 4.1%, information technologies at 20.5%, and legislative for the month was at 6.5%. The police department's at 8%, ECC's at 7.4%, the fire department was at 8.2%, and the EMS department was at 9.4%. In our Public Works area, Public Works admin was at 5%, city maintenance was at 7.2%, Fort Campbell contracts is at 10.7%, service centers at 7.3%, parks and rec is at 10.7%, the sportsplex was at 7.2%, and the aquatic centers at 40.1%. Total general fund for the month, we're at 9.2%. Total municipal road aid for the year is at 30.5%. And then total capital fund was at 9.9% for the month. Our cash fund balance, we started the year with $15,158,964. This is an unaudited amount. Um, our year-to-date receipts is the $4,385,170, less our year-to-date expenses of $4,376,762, giving us a June, um, I didn't change that, giving us our July cash balance of $15,167,372, less our encumbrances, leaves our available cash at $14,941,720. You see our available cash on June 30th was $14,902,731, 713. So our available cash July 31st is $14,941. You see our capital reserve accounts, all our reserves where we ended June, we had to increase the reserve accounts from, um, the Financial Policy Handbook, we put 50% of the, um, into the capital replacement reserve. Our total capital equipment replacement reserve is now at $2,501,614. We have left in our body camera reserve $40,956, and our future pension obligation reserve is at $1,201,994. So our unassigned cash fund balance is $11,197, and that is 28.2%, which is just above what the MO says. We have to keep 20% unassigned. We prefer 25. So right now, our unassigned cash balance is only at 28.2%. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you guys have any questions about the July financials.
Any questions for Ms. Clayton on the financials? Seeing none, I call her for the annual TIF report, Ms. Melissa Clayton.
Oh, it shouldn't be. Oh my gosh. All right. No, this is 2122. This is Robert. I don't have anything else. Here's a go to Tom. We're gonna need a minute, or if you wanna move on, and we'll come back to this one.
All right, we'll come back to this one. I will call to item C in Pile Lane PVA zoning request. I'll call on Mr. Tom Britton to come up and take to us.
Can everyone see that, the slide?
Yep.
Yes.
Uh, not to be repetitive, but your planning commission is going through the process of original zoning for several parcels, and we are making steady progress. Uh, tonight, we're bringing you two. Uh, the first one is a 14.38 acre tract located on Pile Lane. This is just north of Peachtree subdivision, which, uh, the council has zoned R2. And just some photos of this property. This is currently a vacant property. This is immediately adjacent to the apartment complex, which has been recently constructed on Pile Lane. Uh, the commission is recommending a zoning of R2, which is a one- and two-family residential, uh, district for this site. Uh, that is consistent with what council had for action on Peachtree Place, which is immediately to the south of this. This comes with a unanimous favorable recommendation from your commission. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
I'd like to make a motion. We send this to the clerk to turn it to the ordinance. Gotta get it right this time.
Second.
All right, got it. It's Mr. Kiel, and then we have Councilman Craig. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, we'll move on to item D, and it's still stuck with you, Mr. Tom.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the second tract is immediately north of the property, uh, you just considered. Uh, this property has been recently developed as the apartment complex on Pile Lane. Uh, this is across from Casey White Heritage Place, which, uh, the council considered an R3 zoning for that property. There's some photos of the site. Uh, the recommendation of the planning commission is to assign a zoning designation of R3 for this tract. That is a one- and two-family residential district. That is consistent with the zoning of Casey White, which is immediately across the street from this property. I will note that currently that property is being developed or has been developed as multifamily. Uh, the R3 district is one step below multifamily. It's a one- and two-family district. However, the district assignment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map for this area. If any council members have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Okay.
I'm, I'll make the motion. We send it to the clerk to turn it to an ordinance again.
Second.
Got Jamie and Steve right there. Thank you.
Okay, you have a motion in a second. I can ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Is the multifamily a permitted use by condition?
It is eligible for plan unit development consideration, but it is not a use allowed by right. Uh, if there, if it is zoned R3, it becomes a non-conforming grandfathered use, which means the status is the status. It does limit potential expansion of the site. Uh, if the use is discontinued for more than a year, then potentially non-conforming status could be lost.
I totally understand. It's all I need to, thank you.
Any other questions for Tom? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on. Uh, E, that's still you there. Mr. Tom?
Yes, sir. In addition to the zoning map, the planning commission is currently looking at the zoning ordinance, and we anticipate we'll be bringing, uh, some master amendments to you, uh, within the next several months. We have a, a, a good review that's going. It has been a lengthy review. It's been a very comprehensive review. In the course of that review, as certain items come up that we think are pressing and warrant consideration, we're bringing them to you. Uh, one of the areas we have been looking at is some of the requirements in the downtown district and what we can do to encourage and incentivize growth and development. Uh, one of the areas we have looked at is the density provisions in the B3 district. Currently, those are consistent with an R4 district. And what the proposal is, is to raise that density to an R5 district. The thought process behind that change is you incentivize redevelopment, basically going from 20 units per acre to 35. For a quarter acre lot, the significance of that is you could have a current standard five-apartment units with an R5 density, you could potentially have nine apartment units. The thought process is this will help redevelopment. Mr. Mayor, if any of the council members have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Okay.
I'll make the motion since you're looking at me to send it to the clerk to, to an ordinance.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mahiks. All right, any questions for, uh, Mr. Tom Britton? Alrighty, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, we're moving along right there. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate all your hard work you're doing for us. I would like to try to call Ms. Melissa Clayton back to the podium.
Okay, now we have the annual TIF report. It should be on your screen.
We're waiting on there.
Okay, so for the How McCoy TIF, we have, um, payroll and property tax TIF going on. Um, we had total collections for the year of $10,899. We had property taxes collected of $5,191. We rebated back to the developer, a total of $10,780, and we retained in the TIF fund by the city $5,309. That represents $558,000 worth of payroll, equivalent payroll. So for the Drury McCoy TIF, um, it's just a property tax rebate. Um, we had total collections of $17,276, and 100% of that is being rebated back to the developer. So $17,276 and zero retained by the city. And then on the Convention Center TIF, we have, um, payroll and property taxes. We have total payroll taxes collected $21,203. Property taxes collected $13,855, for a total of $35,058. Rebated to the developer was $24,404, and retained by the city was $10,654. That brings our fund balance, the total fund balance in the TIF account. We started the year with $46,338. We had total collections of $71,243. Rebated back to, um, the different people was $52,910, leaving a fund balance at the, uh, as of June 30th of $64,671. I'll be happy to answer any questions about the TIF account.
Any questions from, uh, Ms. Melissa Clayton? Alrighty. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Alrighty, since- Alrighty, since, alrighty, we will move into item nine, approval of minutes for the August meeting of August 1 of 2023.
Make a motion.
Second.
Don and Travis? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, moving right along. Executive orders. Executive order 49-2023 Code of Ordnance, Code of Enforcement Board.
Effective immediately, John Schmidt shall be appointed to the Code of Ordnance Enforcement Board to fill the unexpired term of Chris Furr. This term shall expire February 29th, 2024. And we do need a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Jamie and Matthew? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, moving right on. And item 11, other? Anybody got anything they'd like to talk about under other councilmen? All right, all right, we'll move into councilman comments now. Who wants to talk? Okay, we're seeing none of that. I will move into item 13, adjournment. Back to you, Ms. Craig.
Thank you much. As you're all aware, it's back to school time. You know, we've got different schools starting at different times. I'm an educator. I start tomorrow. So learning has been on my mind. So in our adjourning thought today, I wanted to share a little bit about learning. And this is not just for students, but for all of us because I think we all should be lifelong learners. So this is my adjourning thought. The capacity to learn is a gift. The ability to learn is a skill. The willingness to learn is a choice. And with that, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you. It's so fun. I really feel, I really, really, I feel passionate about it.